Welcome, everybody, to the Township of West Orange Planning Board Meeting, October 9th, 2024, at 7:30 PM. Notice that this meeting was given to the Township Clerk and posted on Township Bulletin Board and Township Website Calendar and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noticed to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No new matters will start after 10:30 PM. May I ask everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. The next regular planning board meeting will be held October 30th, 2020, sorry, the next planning board special meeting will be held October 30th, 2024, at 6:30 PM, in person in Town Hall. The next regular planning board meeting will be held November 6th, 2024, at 7:30 PM via Zoom. Roll call, please, Yamalat.
Before I start, I see Mayor McCartney on the attendee list. No, I see Mayor McCartney on the attendees list, so probably we need to promote her to panelists.
Okay, thank you.
I sure will.
Thank you, Megan.
I'm sorry. Mr. Albert?
Here.
Mr. Cardoza? Ms. Caffrey?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mayor McCartney?
She's coming.
Present.
Mr. Morgan? Mrs. Smiraldo?
Here.
It's the Wooks?
Here.
Council President Rutherford?
Here.
Mr. Bueno? Chairman Bogg?
Here, thank you. Piece of housekeeping, Mr. Smiraldo, Mr. Peter Smiraldo has sent a letter to Ms. McGovern that he has watched the video for the September 4th Planning Board Meeting, PB 24-06, 410 Main Street. Let the record reflect that, please. We have the minutes of the 5:1, 2024, West Orange Planning Board Draft Minutes. Do anybody have any corrections or deletions? Mr. Klein?
I also did that, signed that form. I gave it to Yamalat last time.
Let the record reflect, Mr. Clark, Mr. Klein signed the affidavit for PB 24-06, 410 Main Street, September 4th, 2024 meeting. Seeing that, I make a motion, we adopt the 5:1, 2024, West Orange Planning Board Meeting Minutes, Draft Minutes. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chairman, Garino, seconds. On the motion, Yamalat.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Smiraldo?
Yes.
Mr. Wooks? Mr. Wooks?
I'm sorry, yes.
Caffrey?
Yes.
Council President, oh, no, I'm sorry, no. Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Bueno?
Yes.
Chairman Bogg?
Yes, motion carries. The August 7th, 2024, West Orange Planning Board Draft Minutes, does anybody have any corrections or deletions? Seeing none, I make a motion that we adopt 8:7, 2024, West Orange Planning Board Draft Minutes. Do I have a second?
So move.
Mr. Smiraldo, seconds, on the motion, Yamalat.
Mr. Opera?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mrs. Smiraldo?
Yes.
Mr. Wooks?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey? Council President Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Bueno?
Yes.
Chairman Bogg?
Yes, motion carries, thank you. Ms. McGovern, would you swear in the Township Professionals, please?
Hey, Mr. Jordan and Mr. Hazel, if you would please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth with respect to these matters this evening?
I do.
Yeah.
The application, PB 24-06, 410 Main Street, holding LLC Block 113, Lot 26264, and 308, 410 Main Street. The applicant has requested it to be adjourned to the Planning Board Regular Meeting on November 6th, 2024. I'll post the reason that one of the experts to the applicant, they have relatives that is in the Milton Hurricane Zone, and they're worried for their lives. So we, we understand, and our hopes and thoughts are with them. PB 24-12, the estate of Rita Berman, Block 179.03, Lot 9, Zone R617, Fairway Avenue, the applicant, estate of Rita Berman proposes to subdivide the existing Lot 9 with existing single-family dwelling into two new lots designated as Lots 9.01 and 9.02. New Lot 9.01 will contain the existing single-family dwelling, while the new lot will be vacant. Mr. Tremulak for the applicant.
Dr. Bogg, may I just?
I'm sorry, Ms. McGovern.
I don't know that it was made specifically clear that on 410 Main Street, PB 24-06, that it's going to be at the next regularly scheduled meeting, November 6th, which will be by Zoom. Okay, I just wanted that to be clear.
Yes, and they will, they will not have to do any new?
No, 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 no further notice will be given. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's okay, thank you. Mr. Tremulak, you're up, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. Alan Tremulak, MacClure Real Estate Law Group, appearing on behalf of the applicant, the estate of Rita Berman, which is the owner of property located at 17 Fairway Avenue. As the chairman has already noted in his opening remarks, this is an application for minor subdivision approval with respect to that property. Just a little more information regarding the property, it's located at the corner of Fairway Avenue and Barbara Avenue. The lot consists of approximately 16,000 square feet of lot area with an existing single-family home. As far as zoning, the property is located in West Orange Zoning District R6, which has a minimum lot area requirement of 6,000 square feet, lot with requirement of 60 feet. We're proposing to subdivide the property into two lots to retain the existing single-family dwelling and to create what is essentially a fully conforming new lot, which would front on Barbara Avenue. That lot, as has been confirmed by your planner, meets all of the dimensional requirements of the ordinance in terms of lot area. It exceeds the 6,000-square-foot minimum requirement. It's 60 feet wide, and again, fully conforming. The only variance that's required in connection with this application relates to the what's shown on the subdivision plan prepared by Richard Hingos as proposed Lot 9.01, which again is the lot that would contain the existing house. That proposed lot would be considerably larger than the minimum lot requirement. Again, the requirement is 6,000 square feet. That lot would be 9,460 square feet. The variance is triggered that because by drawing the subdivision line, it reduces the rear yard behind the existing house to roughly 18 feet, whereas the minimum rear yard requirement in the zone is 30 feet. That's the single variance that's triggered by this application. Comply with all other zoning requirements. You know, because this is a rather large lot, the maximum building, or the amount of building coverage, even with the reduced lot size, is 21%, whereas 35% building coverage is permitted under the ordinance. So there's a substantial amount of green space and open area on this property, which more or less offsets the reduction in the size of the rear yard. So, having provided that background, or introduction, I should say, I have two witnesses to present to the board this evening. My first witness will be Robert Berman, who will provide some brief testimony on behalf of the applicant slash owner of the property. And then my second witness will be Matt Flynn from John McDonough's office, who will provide planning testimony in support of the variance that we're seeking. So unless the board has any preliminary questions for me, I would call my first witness, Robert Berman.
Mr. Tremulak, hang on a second. Matt Flynn seems to be in the attendee column. Can we move him over?
I just did.
Oh, good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And then there's Steph, is that person one of yours?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
She still has her hand up.
I don't know. Can you find out what her hand is up for?
Sure.
Thank you.
Hi, may I ask why your hand is up now? Steph? Steph, you have permission to talk. Or she's on mute. She muted herself.
Okay, then, let's move on. It may be a mistake. Let's move on.
Thank you.
Mr. Cardoza has joined, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cardoza is here, let the record show that, and Mr. Flynn has joined the panelists.
Where's Mr. Flynn? I have to swear you in.
Mr. Flynn, can you show yourself, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth with respect to this matter?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I actually was calling Mr. Berman as my first witness.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
That's okay.
Well, now you're sworn in for when you do test. I have to test, I have to swear in Mr. Berman then also.
Okay.
Mr. Berman, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth with respect to this matter?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Berman, what is your relationship to the property located at 17 Fairway Avenue?
So that had been my parents' home. They bought it in about 1989. They're both gone now. My mom was the last one to pass about five years ago. And right now, so me and my two brothers take care of the property. It was will to the three of us, in equal parts, and my niece currently lives in the house.
Okay. And you're the, are you one of the executors of your mother's estate?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right, and you indicated your mother passed away already, and your, there's, your niece is occupying the house currently.
Yes.
Okay. So the property is located at the corner of Fairway Avenue and Barbara Avenue, correct?
Yes, it is.
And the front of the existing house faces Fairway Avenue, right?
Yes.
All right. And the subdivision plan that we've presented to this board proposes to subdivide the property and create a new lot which would have frontage on Barbara Avenue. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Your understanding? Okay. Can you tell the board, if the application is approved this evening, what are your plans with respect to the existing house and with respect to the new buildable lot that would be created on Barbara Avenue?
So our plan is to, my niece, who currently lives in the house, the house is a lot of house for her. So our plan is to build a house for her, a small, much smaller house on that property for her. And then my son would then buy that house or take over the existing 17 Fairway for himself. So it's for our children.
Okay, so the house would remain in your family, basically.
Yes.
Has been for what, 35 years or so?
Yeah, yes, since 1989.
Okay. Just two questions that were noted in one of the reports. The subdivision plan notes that there's an existing concrete patio in the rear of the, of the, of the house, correct?
Yes.
All right, and if this application were to be approved, is it your intention to remove the concrete patio?
Yes, it is.
In its entirety, right?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's really old, maybe original from the house and probably, you know, needs to go anyway, so.
Okay. And the subdivision plan also notes that there's an existing chain link fence along the Barbara Avenue side of the property. Is it your intention to remove that fence if the subdivision is approved?
Yes, I think that fence would probably be relocated to then section off the backyard of the existing 17 Fairway.
Okay, but it would be removed from the?
Well, yes, 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 it would be removed from Barbara Avenue.
Okay, all right. That's really all I have for Mr. Berman, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do any members of the board have any questions for Mr. Berman about his testimony? Do any members of the board have any questions about, for Mr. Berman about his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Mayor McCartney?
Just thank you, Mr. Tremulak. You mentioned that it was 60 feet wide on Barbara Avenue. Can you tell me what the depth is?
Sure, Mayor, it's 108 feet deep, actually. 108.02 feet, so essentially 108 feet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do any other members of the board have any questions for Mr. Berman on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Seeing none. Mr. Hazel, do you have any?
Mr. Chair, I had my hand up.
I'm sorry. Who had their?
There was a handle, the boxes keep moving. It was Council President Rutherford.
Council President, sorry. Go right ahead, sir. Council President Rutherford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, gentlemen. Just curious, in the rear of the lot, there is, there are two quite large trees. Are you anticipating cutting down any of the trees to build the new property? I think where, where the, I think that at least one of the trees I know would have to come down, because I think it's smack in the middle of where, where the house is. We would, we would keep any big trees that we can, but if, obviously, if it's right in the middle where the house is, it can't be there. There's a tree ordinance in effect that would have to be complied with. I don't know if your attorneys have made you aware. It was recently passed. I'm looking at the map now, that is quite a large tree, would probably require, you know, between four and eight trees to be replanted on the same property.
We would certainly comply with the tree ordinance, counselor, we have to, and, and we will.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any of the members of the board have any questions from Mr. Berman on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. As the boxes have stopped moving, seeing none, thank you. Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions for Mr. Berman on his testimony?
I have none at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hazel. Mr. Jordan, do you have any questions for Mr. Berman's testimony?
Yes, I do. So my first question has to do with our letters, comment number four, which is, do you plan on having a major subdivision filing the map or by deed?
I have to answer that, Mr. Teller. We would perfect the subdivision by deed. We do not intend to file a map.
Okay, all right, then, request that a, just a reduced copy of the subdivision to be included with that deed.
Sure.
All right, and another question I have is for the new lots, Lot 9.02, so that new building. Do you, what are your intentions for addressing grading and drainage for that new lot?
I don't think we've gotten that far. Is that, is that from here for you, Mr. Tremulak?
I, I think it's really for me. I mean, we, you know, that would, would be addressed when a building permit is applied for, as I think would be the ordinary course, where grading and drainage plans would need to be presented at the time of the building permit application and reviewed by the appropriate officials, I presume the town engineer, most importantly, and, you know, the engineer would have to sign off on those plans before a building permit could be issued.
Okay, I would just like to request that to be a condition of approval?
Absolutely.
All right. I have nothing, no other questions at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the public have any question for Mr. Berman on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Berman on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have one so far. David Amati, please state your name and address for the record. David?
Yes, sorry about that. David Amati, 11 Fairway Ave, neighbor, right around the corner. I guess my question is related to the the maximum size of the dwelling that could be built on the new subdivided lot. What are, what is the, like, the maximum footprint that could be built there?
I don't know if I can answer that question. I might defer that to?
Yeah.
I'll try to answer that. I mean, we, it's shown on the building plan, I don't know if you've seen that, Mr. Amati, not the building plan, the subdivision plan, which I don't know whether you've seen it, but that includes a building envelope, which is the, the house would have to fit within that building envelope. I don't know exactly what the dimensions are that are. Our next witness might be able to discuss that. Now, it doesn't mean the house is going to occupy the entire building envelope, but it could. You know, and you know, there would need to be, I can tell you this, that there would need to be 30 feet in the rear of the house and 30 feet in the front of the house. So the house would have to be set back 30 feet from Barbara Avenue. And the rear of the house would have to be set back 30 feet from the adjoining property on Fairway Avenue. I don't know if that's your property or not. You know, but again.
I, I, yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Tremulak. I have not seen the, the plans. I would just be curious if that's, that's available to the public somewhere?
It's on the website.
Yes, okay.
Could he, could one of the witnesses bring it up and show it on the screen?
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah, I mean, Mr. Flynn can probably do that now, if you'd like.
Okay. Well, if we? What, the, the? I think? R6 zone allows a 45% maximum lot coverage.
But that's, that's total, that's including the driveway, talking about building coverage. 35% of 6,480 square feet. It could be a footprint of 2268.
22, yeah. Plus the driveway.
Thank you. So 2268 is the, is the footprint of the actual maximum footprint of the dwelling there?
Max, maximum.
Thank you.
And does, does the, I'm sorry, one last question, and the 30-foot setback, does that align with the other homes that are on the Barbara,
Barbara Street as well?
I believe so, but I'm not sure we really can have that information. Again, our next witness may be able to answer that. But we haven't plotted out the, the, you know, the rear yards on the adjoining properties. But just from eyeballing what I'm looking at here, which is a Google Maps, I think the answer to your question is, yes, it's generally true, in terms of the setbacks would be similar.
Can we share this, excuse me, Chairman, can we share the screen?
Yes.
Of the footprint?
I think they're working on it.
Now, are you able to pull that up?
Yeah, I'm clicking into it right now, bear with me.
Here we go. I know Mr. Flynn is going to review this as part of his testimony, which would hopefully answer any additional, you know, questions that Mr. Amati might have.
Thank you, this is helpful.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions, Mr. Amati?
I think, I don't think he answered his question, did? Because you can't see on Lot 8, there's no outline of a house, so you're going to wait for Mr. Flynn to explain?
Yeah, we have to wait for Mr. Flynn. But we're not done with the public comment, at public questions. Okay, do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Berman about his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have a few, a few other members, so we're gonna pass over David for now. And then we'll come back. Alex, Alex Kenny, please state your name and address for the record.
Alex Kenny, 15 Fairway Avenue, Lot 11, in that picture that was just shown, so adjacent to the two properties that are being discussed here. Is the approval that we're looking at tonight contingent that this build that is being proposed, perhaps coming up, is the approval contingent that that is exact, not exact, but going to be the exact footprint? Because obviously, there's variances in place here with the 17-foot backyard for the current property. Does anything stop the new lot of filing the variance and asking for a smaller backyard there?
Nothing would prevent that, but I can tell you, there's no intention to do that. You know, the footprint that's shown on the plan is certainly large enough to accommodate a house on the property, and there's no intention whatsoever to build a house that would require any variances whatsoever with respect to Lot 9.02.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. Berman about his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Drew Kressler. Please state your name and address for the record. There you go.
Thank you. Drew Kressler, I'm on Gerties in Verona, 20 Gerties. I just noted that there's, there was a rather large tree on Barbara, right about where that lot is going to be. So you've been planning on this for a while, is what it seems. And according to the tree ordinance, you were to put several trees back, is that? Did that happen yet? Or, and I'm not sure if you have space for all these trees that you're going to need to put there. Is that?
Well.
Generation?
With, with regard to the tree that was taken down. Yes. That tree was dead, it was a very, very dangerous hazard. There was a huge branch that was hanging over. It was ready to fall off and kill somebody. So that was not, that tree was never taken down with the intention for, for this lot approval. It was, it was taken down because the tree was dead, and it was a hazard.
Righto. Okay.
Do you have any other questions, sir?
No, that's fine, that's fine.
Thank you.
Well, how big is this house? Is, how many bedrooms do you believe is this new house going to be?
I believe, we, we haven't planned the house yet, but it's going to be a modest house. It's going to be a three-bedroom, maximum four-small-bedroom house. It's, it's going to be a modest home.
Right. All right, that's fine.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Berman? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Berman, please raise your hand and be identified?
I think Alex Kenny already spoke, Alex, do you have another question?
Uh, yeah, just the comment in regards to the tree, um, it was hanging over my lot as well, and I was in discussion with Robert and his brother. Um, so that it did shed leaves that actually fell on our car, so um, there was. We, I had an arborist come over as well, so it was infected, um, so I can attest to that, that Robert is accurate in that discussion.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Do any of the members of public have any questions for Mr. Berman on his testimony, please raise your hand and be identified?
Not seeing any others.
Great, we're to close this portion of public comment, public questions, Mr. Tremulak, you have the floor?
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, my uh, next and final witness is Matt Flynn.
Good evening.
I think has already been sworn. Um, Matt, why don't you uh, begin uh, by um. Providing the board with a brief uh, summary of your educational uh, background and your professional experience?
Sure, my education comes from Rutgers, I have my master's degree in planning and public policy, I have my professional planner's license in the state of New Jersey. As well as my uh, AICP license, which is the National Licensor for Planners. I've testified before over a hundred boards across the state, uh, I believe this is my first time before this board. Um. My licenses are, are both in good standing.
And, and what is your current um, business affiliation?
Yeah, I work with John McDonough Associates at one zero one Gibraltar Drive in Morris Plains, New Jersey.
Okay, so Chairman, I'd, I'd offer Mr. Flynn as an expert in the field of professional planning?
Unless any members of the board have any questions for Mr. Flynn on his bona fides, we accept him as a planner licensed in the state of New Jersey. Mr. Flynn, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, Matt, uh, you're familiar with, obviously you're familiar with the subdivision plan for this property prepared by Richard Hingos, is that right?
I am.
Okay, can you review that plan, I think you had it on the screen a minute ago? Uh, if you could just review the plan for the board, discuss the zoning requirements for the property. And, you know, identify the one variance that's required in connection with this subdivision.
Yeah, um, can everybody see my screen here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm trying to zoom in on the actual plan to just get a better view, but I'm not sure if it's.
There you go.
So by way of quick background, I know the board has been uh, introduced to the case already, we are in the corner of Fairway Avenue and Barbara Avenue. We're looking at a lot that's approximately, it's just under sixteen thousand square feet. Which I would say is substantially oversized per zoning, the zoning requirement in the R six zone is only six thousand square feet. And so we are over double that requirement, uh, so for that reason alone, I think it, it, it's sort of a logical approach to cut this lot in half and get uh, two homes on it. Um, but I'll get into the appropriateness of the application in, in just a minute. Uh, existing, we do have a single-family home on the corner of Fairway and Barbara, and obviously what we can see on the screen here is we're proposing a subdivision line. Uh, behind that house, uh, to create a new lot nine point zero two behind it. Uh, so basically, on the planning end, what I did was obviously I looked at the, the zoning requirements, how we comply, how we don't comply. I looked at the, the, what I would call intensity of the development per se. Um, does the subdivision work here, would a house fit here without. Interrupting any neighborhood patterns in terms of building-to-building separation or anything like that? Um, right off the bat, obviously, since we do have two lots that are conforming in terms of uh, both lot area as well as dimensionally, so. Uh, depth, width, area, uh, that obviously allows us to get a fully conforming home in the future, not part of this application. Uh, here, we're just for the subdivision, but obviously with that, those conforming characteristics. Uh, this would be a lot that is capable of having a fully conforming home on it at, at some point in the future. So like Council mentions, we are looking at one C variance as a result of this subdivision line, which would be the rear setback, so in other words. If the board can see my cursor. It would be essentially the distance between the existing building, so this, this building on the corner here. Uh, the distance between this facade line and the proposed subdivision line. Which is proposed at just under eighteen feet, uh, seventeen point nine four feet to be exact. Whereas thirty feet is the minimum required rear setback. I think that variance is easily justified when we tie that into the statutory criteria, I think we can look at the C two balancing test. Uh, whereby the benefits of the application as a whole substantially outweigh any detriments. To look at those benefits, we look to the municipal land use law and the purposes of zoning set forth therein. I looked at purpose A, promotion of the general welfare, I think I used the word compatibility uh, before. Seeing that we have a property that is substantially oversized, more than even double the zoning requirement. This large area that's currently undeveloped and part of the existing property. Sort of stands out as a, as a void along Barbara Avenue, it has the size and dimensions of a fully conforming lot. Um, and so for that reason, it does stand out as a sort of void uh, in the streetscape. In terms of building-to-building separation, I'm still on uh, sort of compatibility here. Again, right now, we have this very large building-to-building separation, I think by putting a building in there. Um, that can easily meet the setback requirements, is not going to interrupt any, any uh, any neighborhood pattern. Also, I just wanna note here that, what, if we look at the existing building on the lot. As I noted, the distance between this existing building and the subdivision line is just under eighteen feet. Uh, that's actually counted as a rear setback requirement. But if you're looking at the property from Barbara Avenue, and we look at what that distance actually represents as a. Sort of building-to-building separation along the street, it does have the visual impact of as, as a side setback. And if we were to look at the zoning table here. The required side setback is, is substantially less than, than the thirty-foot requirement than, that we're requesting the relief for. The only reason I say that is again, just to preserve that building-to-building separation along Barbara Avenue. We're not going to have a crammed-in effect or any buildings too close to any other buildings. I looked at purpose G of the municipal land use law, variety of uses in appropriate locations, here we're talking about a permitted use. That will fit on the proposed lot, it belongs here per zoning, and I think that it can uh, fit here without standing out visually. Uh, purpose I, desirable visual environment, again, for those reasons that I just put on the record, uh, a dwelling here would not appear crammed in. It would work here and it would fit in with the established pattern that we see in the neighborhood. Purpose M, efficient use of land, uh, I'll go back to the zoning chart here. And if we look at the required building coverage of thirty-five percent. Our existing building is substantially less than that, twenty-one point one five percent. Similarly, lot coverage, uh, we're allowed to go up to forty-five percent, and we're only at thirty-eight point five nine percent. Obviously, that's for the existing building, we're not proposing a, a new building at this time. But again, when we talk about efficient use of land, I think we have to take into account all of these zoning requirements. In order to see if this is going to stand out as being overdeveloped or uh, you know, too much building mass or anything like that. So all of that goes towards the positive criteria, uh, purposes A, G, I, and M from the municipal land use law. The flip side to that is the negative criteria, so no substantial detriment to the public or to the zone. Like I said, uh, Lot nine point zero one or Lot nine point zero two are going to be uh. Are going to require any dimensional or lot area relief. As I stated, the existing building is not oversized, even when we shrink down that lot area. We're still substantially compliant in terms of building and lot coverage, uh, building height is also compliant. Uh, so again, just to put that into perspective here, we're not looking at a building that's going to appear crammed in on either of these lots. I think we can also look at the C one hardship test whereby the relief relates to the land and the structures lawfully existing thereon. Uh, in other words, we're not talking about relief that relates to an oversized structure or overdevelopment per se. We're talking about relief that's basically a result of the existing uh. Uh, building mass on the property that we're, we think is a better zoning alternative to retain, as opposed to, to getting rid of that. Um, we, our corner lot with two front yards, which does, I would say. Pose a, a hardship to the applicant in the sense that if this were not a cor- corner lot. Like I noted, we would have substantially uh, more lenient uh, setback requirements. But again, I think in the grand scheme of things, we do have substantial light air, open space that's being provided here. By virtue of our vast conformance with the rest of the zoning requirements. So all said, I think I'll, I can put the screen back on the, on the site plan here. All said, I think that when all said, when all is said and done, we're not talking about. Uh, an oversized building, we're not talking about shrinking down an existing lot to a point where the. Existing building is going to look funny or crammed in or anything like that. Um, I spoke about the building-to-building separation along Barbara Avenue. Uh, we're not going to have something that's going to stand out as being an exceptionally uh, large like we have now, or an exceptionally small space. Uh, between buildings, and I think this is going to be a um, a, an appropriate use of space, so with that, unless there's any redirect. I'll open myself up to questions.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn, Vice Chairman Garina, do you have any questions for Mr. Flynn on his testimony? Vice Chairman Garino?
No, not at this time, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman, Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions for Mr. Flynn on his testimony?
Uh, no, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor McCartney, Council President Rutherford, do you have any questions for Mr. Flynn on his testimony?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank Council President, uh, Mr. Wilks, do you have any questions for Mr. Flynn?
Um, no, no questions at this time, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Albert, do you have any questions for Mr. Flynn?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smiraldo, do you have any questions for Mr. Flynn?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein, do you have any questions for Mr. Flynn?
I have a few questions, um. Mr. Flynn, can you tell me the width of? Lot Eight, which is the lot just to the, I'll call it north of the subdivision lot, do you know the width of that lot?
Yes, bear with me just one second. The width of Lot Eight is ninety-nine feet, I'm sorry, sixty-six feet.
Okay, upside down, okay.
I was upside down.
Got you, got you, okay, so that, that lot is sixty-six and it faces Barbara Avenue, and this lot that you're subdividing will be only sixty. Um, when you say voids in the, how did you say it, there are voids in the, what'd you say, the street frontage or the streetscape or?
Yeah, I just said that since we're looking at an area that is about the area, it's actually over the minimum lot area that's required for a legal uh, lot in the zone. It's, it's about the size of, of a lot that you would typically see in the neighborhood.
So if you look at Lot Twenty-two across the street from Barbara, if you look at Lots Eleven and Fifteen down on Barbara and Cunningham. Those also have large voids along Barbara, I, I think even Lot One. Catty corner from this property, so are, are you suggesting that possibly these other lots could be subdivided? Because they'd have street frontage on Barbara and they can have access to Barbara and, and create two lots out of one?
Yeah, I would say it depends on the placement of those existing houses, which I haven't actually looked at, but I would say if the house is. Smack in the middle, then it wouldn't really be a feasible subdivision, but again, I haven't looked at that.
Okay. So you're saying just because the, the house that's at seventeen Fairway is so far forward, I'll call it toward Fairway. Leaving this large void in the back, that, a- and it has obviously access to a street for Barbara Avenue, that it makes sense to. Subdivide this into a sixty-by-one-hundred-and-eight lot?
Yeah, exactly, and I'm looking at an aerial image now, and. It's actually kind of what I was suggesting, if we look at Lot Twenty-two across Barbara Avenue, we're looking at a dwelling that's right in the middle of that lot. So it wouldn't really, it doesn't really have that same effect. Uh, whereas our property, we're looking at a, a building that is elongated along uh, Fairway Avenue. And leaving more space open in the back, so it is a different situation.
So you said. It's not crammed in there because it's a sixty-foot wide lot and you can put a proper-sized house on it with. Thirty feet from the front, thirty feet from the back, eight on left, ten on the right, but now, instead of thirty feet. Seventeen Fairway only has a seventeen point nine four foot setback, so. It used to have, what is it, a seventy, almost eighty-foot deep backyard, now it's got a less than eighteen-foot deep backyard. To me, that sounds cramped.
Yeah, all I, all I'm saying is, you know, these other properties along Barbara Avenue, they're only required to have a. Uh, a ten-foot building-to-building separation, because we're a corner lot, we do have to meet a. Much stricter uh, requirement being thirty feet, but these other properties only are required to have ten feet to their side property line. Uh, so that's why I was kind of trying to differentiate between what I'm calling building-to-building separation. And the literal uh, application of the setback requirements. It's more of a visual or aesthetic thing.
Right, so, but we, you do need a variance for the seventeen point nine four where thirty is required?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and just so the board knows, that's because it's uh, it's being triggered as a rear setback. But again, it's a, you're right, yeah.
Right, okay, alright. Okay, alright, thank you, that's all.
Thanks.
Mr. Cadoza, do you have any questions for Mr. Flynn on his testimony?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cadoza, Ms. Capra, do you have any questions for Mr. Flynn on his testimony?
I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Capra, Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions for Mr. Flynn's testimony?
No, I don't at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hazel, Mr. Jordan, do you have any questions for Mr. Flynn on his testimony?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan, do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Flynn on his testimony, please raise your hand and be identified?
Yes, we have uh, Adam O'Connell, please state your name and address for the record. Adam, you need to unmute yourself. Adams, oh, maybe it's Adams in Virginia? We can go to David Amati and see, and come back to the O'Connells.
Okay.
David, please state your name and address again for the record.
Hello, uh, David Abadi, uh, eleven Fairway Ave, again, um, question for, for Mr. Flynn. Um, if, if you wouldn't mind bringing back the, bringing back up the plan, uh, if possible. And I guess this is also a question for the West Orange Planning Board as well, is there, is there like a specific? Um, like based upon looking at the, the proposed building envelope, is there a specific um. Ordinance that exists as to where, which side the driveway needs to be, or distance between, like uh. You know, the edge of a lot and, and, again, I'm just trying, I, I know there's no plans for this, this secondary house to be built. As, as of yet, I'm just wondering if there is like a specific side or specific ordinance as, as where the driveway needs to, needs to be compared to neighboring lots?
Yeah, and I'm sure Mr. uh, Hazel will, will jump in on, on specifically if there's any reference to that, but I would say that because we're a conforming size and dimensional lot. Conceivably, you would be able to comply with all, all facets of the, of the zoning requirements, otherwise there would be a contradiction in the, in the zoning. So if there were a requirement for building setbacks, uh, conceivably you would. Have a, a, a lot with requirement that takes that into account. And we comply with that.
Mr. Flynn, do you know what the average lot size is of the other lots in like the surrounding, like, I don't know, one or, one or two block radius, what, what, what? The average lot size is, the surrounding homes?
I have not done that analysis, there is a, a variety, is what I noted, of lot sizes. Some larger than ours, some small, some uh, smaller.
I guess that's what my question is, is will this be like the smallest lot in a couple-block radius as compared to, I'm understanding that it conforms with what's required, but I'm just curious as to how it fits in with the rest of the, you know, surrounding neighborhood.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to get you just an example.
How about like lots 1 and 3 on the end of Pleasant and Fairway? Next to Lot 15? It looks like 1 and 3 together would look like 9. Pretty close. I don't have the scale.
Mr. Klein, you said lots 1 and...
1 and 3 at the Pleasant Valley end of Fairway. Right? If you look at that, it kind of looks visually, 1 and 3 together looks like 9. But 1 and 3 are equally divided as opposed to what you're gonna do with 9. Right?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I'm looking at what you're looking at. I know that the member of the public can't see that. But you're right, there are instances of the same. I guess I could share my screen. We would have to enter a new exhibit. But to answer your question, there's comparable lots, for sure.
Thank you. I do have an additional question. It's not for Mr. Flynn. It is for Mr. Berman. But I, we can break that up maybe afterwards.
We could have Mr. Berman now. Let's get, if it's on this...
Yeah, I guess my question for Mr. Berman is, if the intention is to keep the property within the family, I guess my question is, is there a reason that the lot is being asked to be subdivided as opposed to putting an accessory dwelling unit on the same single lot?
Yeah, I think my niece wants her own house and my son wants his own house. I don't think they want to live together. Just to give you a little background, we live on Fairway Avenue, myself, my wife. And my kids grew up on Fairway in Verona. My one son lives on Hillside, which is right behind us. My other daughter lives on Forest Avenue in Verona. So we're a very close family and we all like to be around each other. So it's a really nice thing for us to all live in close proximity to each other.
Okay, is there anything else?
Do any other members of the public have any questions? Please, for Mr. Flynn, please raise your hand and be identified.
Okay, we're gonna try the O'Connells again. Please state your name and address for the record. Maybe because it's on an iPhone, that they're having a problem. You need to unmute? Okay, we'll come back to you. We have Drew Krosler wants to speak again from this witness. Hang on. Go ahead, Drew. State your name and address for the record again.
Clark 20 Curtis Avenue, Verona. I am, I'm just wondering if the things change, people move all the time, circumstances get, you know, move along. So I'm wondering if one of your children decides to move and can they sell those two properties independently? One, or is it a package deal that they sell both as one sale? So I'm sure it's a legal question, but... I think it... Are you understanding what I'm trying to say?
I do. I don't know if I'd be the appropriate...
Mr. Castle, I think it is a legal question, which I can easily answer. I mean, if there are subdivided lots, then they can be sold and transferred independent of each other. So it would not have to be a package deal. I mean, one of the family members could sell the lot and the house that they own independent of whatever.
Right, so it's not a mother-daughter kind of, or grandma kind of house in the back?
Not at all. Two separate houses on two separate lots, if the application is approved.
I see. Got it. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Flynn on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
We're gonna try the O'Connells for the last time.
Okay.
Mr. O'Connell?
Think they have to hit star six or star nine?
Yeah.
Unmute, isn't that what it is?
Yeah. But I don't think they're calling in. They're using an iPhone, so it's like a phone setup?
Yeah, you still, I think there's a star six. I think Leah is right.
That's calling it. You're right, Megan. That's if you're calling in. They have to touch their screen so that they can see the mute.
Oh, okay, yeah.
It's like a little mini-computer with a touchscreen. Yeah, yeah.
Right. Okay, I think we're at a time.
Okay. That's the end of questions for Mr. Flynn. Mr. Tremulak, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That completes our presentation. We have no further witnesses or evidence to present. I would like the opportunity to just briefly sum up after hearing from the public if there's any comments related to the application.
At this time, we'll open the floor to public comment. Do any members of the public have any public comment about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
We do have Mr. Hazel, town planner.
Yes. I just wanted to follow up on the question that was posed by Mr. Amadi before about the location of a driveway. The town ordinance does require a five-foot setback from the side yard for the driveway. Just wanted to let him know that that's the case.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do any members of the public have a comment about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any.
Okay. Do any members of the public have any comment about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Seeing none.
We're gonna close public comment. Thank you. Do any members of the board have any questions or comments about this application? Please raise your hands. Mr. Hazel, do you have any comments about this application?
No, I don't.
Mr. Jordan, do you have any comments about this application?
No, no questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I have one quick question. So the issue about the tree, the issue about the tree coming down and having to put back four, is that true or not? Do we know?
I don't know what tree's on the lot or what's not on the lot. So I guess the forest would have to go out there and take a look at it and make a determination.
I think we'll put a condition in that they must follow the tree ordinance, which they would have to do anyway, but we'll emphasize it.
So their next step, if this gets approved, is they come in for a building permit with a drawing that shows a conforming single-family home. All right, okay.
So to that end, I'll just start my discussion. I am not convinced that this is a C1 variance. I am more inclined to a C2 variance, where it promotes the general welfare. It divides the two lots to be more conforming to the lots in the neighborhood. It satisfies the negative criteria. It promotes the goal of the MLUL and the benefits outweigh the detriments. To that end, I recommend we grant the C2 variance for application PB 24-06410 Main Street Holding LLC, Block 113, Lot 262, 264, and 308. I'm sorry. Wrong one. My fault. Try that again. For PB 24-12 Estate of Rita Berman, Block 179.03, Lot 9, Zone R6, 17 Fairway Avenue, creating two single-family lots, designed lots 9.01 and 9.02. New Lot 9.01 will contain the existing single-family dwelling, while the new Lot 9.02 will be vacant. Do I have a second?
That can miss, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman Garino, seconds. On the motion, Yamalat?
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mrs. Marado?
Yes.
Mr. Wilks?
Yes.
Mr. Cardozo?
Yes.
Council President Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Waino?
Yes.
Chairman Bago?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, board members. Have a good evening.
Welcome.
Wonderful evening, everybody. The next regular planning, sorry, the next regular planning board meeting will be Wednesday, November 6, 2024, at 7:30 PM via Zoom. And the next Planning Board Special Meeting will be held October 30, 2024, at 6:30 PM in person at Town Hall. Thank you very much. Everybody have a wonderful evening. Motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Klein, seconds, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You know it, the eyes are above the nose.
Have a good night.
Have a wonderful evening, everybody. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
And have a good night to the members of the public.
One or two, one or two.